All right, good morning, everyone. Tim is running a little bit behind you at an early morning meeting, so we'll just go ahead and get a couple of the items here cleaned up real quick.
Yeah.
So, the first item is the approving the minutes for June 12th.
Sure.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Hold on.
(laughing).
A little bit behind this morning.
Okay.
Do I read?
No, we already did.
No, we did that.
You're good. I can, and then I have the next two items, I believe. So, item number two, I'm reporting on things I approved on your behalf under the authorization provided to you by your Resolution 18077. So, on June 14th, on behalf of Department of Aging, I approved the hiring of Leah Byler and Deborah Markovic to the position of Information and Referral Systems, job number 1017, to be effective June 25th, 2018, at the rate of 1304 per hour over the one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon successful completion of required pre-employment conditions. And then on June 18th, on behalf of Department of Water Resources, I approved the hiring of Nick Crowe to position a maintenance worker, which is job number 2330, to be effective July 16th, 2018, at the rate of 1751 per hour over the one-year probationary period. Again, this offer of employment is contingent upon successful completion of required pre-employment conditions. And then, item number three, I approved a very small financial on June 14th, kind of emergency thing. It was a blanket order in the Building Improvement Account within the Building Improvement Fund in order to get the HVAC working in the annex.
Okay. And what was the amount on that?
The amount of the encumbrance was fifteen thousand. I think the actual cost is a little bit less than that, but had to replace an air handler, driveshaft, or something like that.
Yeah, it was very difficult to get to, and they were afraid if something else broke when they were getting in there that it would be a little bit more, so they wanted to make sure that they were covered for any of the eventualities that might happen.
So, one more example, money were put into an older building, not that you wouldn't have your expenses on a newer building, but, you know, just we keep on dumping...
Band-aiding. And Rich, I talked briefly, Rich Newsome yesterday, because Glenn has actually amazingly managed to go on vacation for a week, and Rich is handling it. But Glenn called this morning just to tell me everything's under control, so he's in Maine, but he's still on the job. Rich was telling me some of the pieces parts, he was somewhat amazed they're still available because that system is so old, apparently they got what they needed to get it up and running. Is the, is the AC working in the annex? Okay, cool. All right.
Okay. All right.
Okay, today's financials include an appropriations transfer to the Maintenance Equipment Account to replace an old vehicle deemed too expensive to fix, a supplemental appropriation for the Department of Development, Community Development revolving loan fund to increase available appropriations for new loans, supplemental appropriation from the Commissioner's Office into the Building Improvement Fund for various projects at the Safety Center and Courthouse Annex, supplemental appropriation from JFS into their Children's Services Fund for increased needs and contract services, residential placements and foster care accounts, cash transfer from various funds, including the General Fund to pay the May 2018 Windstream Bill, and cash transfer from the Commissioner's Office to the Sewer Water Debt Retirement Fund for the 2018 first half debt payment for the County Water Power and Potable Water Treatment Plan. Encumbrances include an increase from the Commissioner's Office for Walter Haverfield LLP for anticipated legal expenses, travel requests from the Auditor's Office to awaits and measures testing, training in Reynoldsburg, and an encumbrance from the Department of Development, Community Development for Great Lakes growers revolving loan for machinery and equipment for their greenhouse operation. Among the vouchers are twenty-six thousand eighty-seven dollars and one cent from the Commissioner's Office to the Treasurer for the State of Ohio, for the Ohio Department of Health, VCMH treatment expenditures for May of 2018, thirty-four thousand nine ninety-six ninety-six from the Engineers' Office to junction auto sales for a 2018 model year GMC Sierra 2500 truck, and thirty-two thousand from...
Hey, sorry.
And thirty-two thousand from JFS to the Georgia Community Board of Mental Health for the second quarter 2018 therapeutic youth sector costs.
I just have one question. The voucher we're paying to VCMH, that is out of the group of children's fund in Ohio, do you know what the total paid on that has been? Can you give me that number?
I can get you that number, yes.
So, that's the money that we've taken, we take and pay to the state every year?
Correct.
And where I...
Yeah, we're, it's a certain millage or something, isn't it?
It's equivalent to a, to a tenth of a mill, so we're capped at around three hundred and sixteen thousand, I think.
I think it's right around.
And most years, we don't get charged that much, but this is an example of months where it's a little bit above that average to, to...
For the month, yeah.
For that month, right.
I'll get you that total.
Okay.
I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but I did, I looked into it though because of the tax budget, but...
There's a number of those kinds of fees that the state takes away from us, and what, if they're doing good with it or not, we don't know because we don't, you know, track that. Same thing with the kind of recorder, there's like five hundred thousand dollar a year or something that gets taken away from the kind of recorder. Yes. We charge the fee, the state takes it, and who knows what they do with it, so, just an example. I would like to get the numbers, but...
I will, I will get them for you, yes.
Outside of that, I'll take a question.
Okay. So, Skip, do we have a motion to approve financials?
So, I reviewed last night. Second.
Mr. Quinkle?
Yes.
Thank you, Adrian. And Probate Juvenile Court.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Thanks for coming.
I think we were just asking for you to approve our subsidy grant.
Yes, because we had just a couple of questions last week as far as, you know, I think that we've applied, you guys have usually gotten this in the past also, right?
Yeah, so this is a, yeah, a grant that we have been getting for many, many years.
And this just goes towards, towards what, and what is this utilized for?
Um, we cover probation services, so both of the probation officers are covered out of this fund. I think last year we only covered one probation officer, this year one probation officer.
Okay.
It covers our community service program, which includes our garden. I did bring pictures of last year's garden for you guys to see. We are in the process of work, I have kids out there today working in the garden. It covers our electronic monitoring costs, it covers the drug testing that we do, and it also covers our flip program.
Excellent. Is this down by the county home?
No, this is actually in the corner, it's down by Maple Leaf, so in the corner of Route Six and 608.
608, oh, good.
We have an acre, they donate an acre lot to us, and they plant, so we also, we take the kids in March to Chelsea's Greenhouse, and we plant all the seeds, and then we take them there and plant them, and then we also...
Oh, that looks pretty good.
Donate a lot to the senior centers. I want to say we donated over six hundred plants to the senior centers.
Excellent.
This year, so...
Okay. Yeah, because that's, that's a, that's a, quite a decent amount to, to receive for these programs. That's, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to hear, and I'm glad you're here today to hear, you know, positive things like this, and, you know, that's what, you know, these sessions are for, is to, so we can, three as a board, have a discussion about the things we're doing, and, you know, and that the public gets to hear that as well, you know, not that it's just, you know...
Not always bad news.
Yeah, not just bad news and, and dollars and cents, you know, approving financials and such, you know, that there's a, you know, hardworking people like yourselves out there doing these things, and so, that's, it's good to have communication with, you know, all the departments and, and the orgs, and so I appreciate you coming today.
And I think DYS has also helped us, so that moving forward, that probation department is moving to a more behavioral change, we're going to be using some best practices, interventions with the kids, so we're trying to reduce their risk to reoffend while teaching them some skills, so...
So, are you guys feeling it on, on the juvenile side, same way of the adultist side of it, where there, there's more of a, you know, push that, that they're requiring to have programs other than DH style?
Yes, and that's what Reclaim Grant was originally designed for, was to help keep kids out of DYS, so it would help support the programming to help keep kids out of DYS.
Okay.
So, there's more monitoring going on now than, you know, sending them off to...
We use a lot, look at monitoring a lot for those states, I guess, which we do in our government in detention.
So, with your experience, and I know you've been there for a long time now, do you see that it's, that it's, is it something that you are finding that is good, bad, or too early to tell?
Um, what, the, the reclaim, or the...
You know, kind of the change of what, what we're, you're kind of seeing as far as the...
Well, I think it would only be improved, I mean, we could only improve the kids, you know, if we're teaching them skills or helping them, you know, learn from their mistakes, I think we would teach them whether we see that now or we see it 10 years down the road.
And I think the question, at least, the way that I take that question, is we can send them to juvenile detention center, or we can put an ankle bracelet on them, or whatever the mode is for, you know, keeping them out of detention, keeping them at home, which of those programs proves to work better? Because there is some argument for putting them in detention center, period of more, they're removed from possibly a negative influence, and then they're, you know, in the detention center oftentimes there's a discipline that they learn versus staying in that environment, whatever, and so what is your, what is your stance?
I think we always, I think we always want to keep the kids in the less restrictive environment, so keeping them at home, on the ankle monitor, you know, we're able to, to, you know, get, make sure that they're getting counseling on a regular basis, we're, we're going in the home and monitoring them. You know, we're also protecting the community because our ankle monitors will tell us where the kid is at, so we know where the kid is at at all times. So, I mean, we're ensuring that public safety while we're keeping them in the community so that they can get services. So, that, you know, would be, in my opinion, a better than putting them in detention where it's 45 minutes away, we don't do much in there. I mean, the detention center does have programming, but, you know, they're not, their counselors aren't going there.
That's right. How does that ankle bracelet work? When, when they leave their electronic fence, do you get an alert when you say, oh, is it like on TV where you see, oh my God, there they are?
If they're outside of the, what we've approved for them to, then yes, we would get an alert. So, if we are, have questions about it, then we can, what we call ping them, so we're able to pull up the, the system and tell where they're at. So, but if they're, you know, if, for instance, if it's a sex offender, and we're trying to keep them away from the victim, we'll put a little range around that victim's home, so if they go close there, we would know that they're close there. So, we also do, not only the GPS monitors, also alcohol monitors that we use, so you can, if somebody has a substance abuse problem, we can put an alcohol monitor on them to determine if they're drinking.
Yeah, very good. Great. Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, can you do a read on that?
The Probate, Probate Juvenile Court is requesting the Board to approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Department of Youth Services subsidy grant, juvenile court funding application for, for year 2019, through the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, in the amount of 284,029.81.
So, second.
Mr. Quinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Lennan?
Yes.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Bye now. Number six, John, do you want to speak? So, we'll go to number seven. Planning Commission Dave Dietrich, how are you?
Sure.
Hopefully, we're keeping you awake back there.
Yes, you are.
How's everything?
Good.
Something brief for your consideration this morning. Our last meeting, we approved this replat in, it's within Canyon Lakes in Bainbridge, and it's held by Paint and Paint, in the name of EBDM LLC, the Paint and Paint for the Craftian. But its bill is, is one phase, and Gates Landing is the other phase, and these parcels are selling like high cakes, and, but they wanted, wanted to split the open space between the two subdivisions that I outlined in green on that map. So, that the one subdivision takes care of the landscape portion, and the other subdivision takes care of the stormwater detention pond. You can see, it's kind of hard to determine, but it's in that curve linear area. So, each HOA has responsibilities for its portion of the open space.
What about the, the actual drainage piece there, the, you know, I guess, what do you call it, the reservoir there, or the...
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah. You know, there's been a couple, there was a case, I remember, you know, not too long ago, where homeowners association, are they required to go ahead and, you know, maintain that and clean that out, and...
Oh, yeah, the stormwater basis, yeah. Someone has to be responsible for that. Yeah, soil water monitors, that stuff.
But, I mean, back in the, you know, eighties or even before, I don't think it was, you know, well documented whose responsibility it was, right?
Point well taken. Learned a lot over the years, actually, Commissioner. I think Georgia might have been the first county in the State of Ohio to adopt these stormwater regulations in the late seventies, early eighties, erosion control regulations as well. It's kind of a two-part thing.
Right.
Erosion sediment control during construction, and then stormwater runoff in these detention, detention ponds, we got kind of more and more involved with it. Well, early on, there wasn't much oversight regarding ongoing maintenance.
Right, because the sediment was getting so high and, yeah, yeah.
Right, so more and more over time, it determined, well, this should be the area of concern for Soil and Water Conservation District, being outside of the road right of way.
Okay.
County engineer, as you know, has control within the road right of way, but because of these things, the location of these things, and other factors and criteria, including the way the ORC has written on it, it was determined to give this authority to Soil and Water Conservation District. So, they have maintenance oversight, and what most developers do is they put these areas, either a separate block, like they did in this case, or an easement area, is related on the plat, and these are typically granted to the HOA, the homeowners association.
And it's their responsibility and expense to...
Correct. They pay dues, part of their dues at Willow is for the ongoing maintenance of these areas. And then Soil and Water, they come in, I think it's annually at least, maybe it's more than that, to review the, how things are working.
Right.
And they provide a report to the...
Now, what if they didn't have a homeowners association set up from back in the...
Way back in the day?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where it gets interesting.
Yeah, and these things are getting, it was expensive.
Some property owners have had to come up with some dollars to maintain because it's on their property.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, there's one down in Cheston, just like that.
Yeah.
Remember the worst, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And the guy across the street had a retention plot that was on his property.
Yeah.
And it kept getting clogged up and not running properly, and, sorry, it's on your property. It's a part of the association.
Correct. So...
But they were, they were trying to come back at the, I think it was in Russell Township, wasn't it? You know, they were trying to say maybe Russell Township was responsible to keep it clean or, or to come clean it out, and, you know, so, yeah.
We've not granted any of these things to the townships, or...
Okay, yeah.
Now, we do have a little bit, some, I don't need to deviate too much, I know you've got a lot going on, but we do have, through the County Engineers' Office and Soil and Water, we've tried to, again, come up with a little better system of maintaining these things, and on the plats, it's more clear as to the scope and extent of the affected areas, and we've also set out more parameters and criteria in their Declaration of Covenants Restrictions, which are recorded, so we've got plenty of notice, as Skip has just indicated, that probably, we've got plenty of notice to people buying property. This will turn up in their title report, you see, that this is what is going on in this subdivision, so...
Okay.
Trying to do our best in further refine this sort of thing over the years, by the way.
Great. Okay.
Planning Commission is requesting the Board to approve and execute the final plat of Phyllis of Gates Landing, a replat of Block B2, creating Block B2A and Block B2B in Bainbridge Township.
So, second.
Mr. Quinkle?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Good, good.
We have three items, I'd like to do them in three separate, just because they're different. Item number eight is to execute the unit price contract with Chagrin Valley Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Georgia Road, County Highway 40, Section E through D, in Burton and Middlefield Townships, in the amount of 696 dollars, 696, 51 dollars and 58, 696,051 dollars and 58 cents. The bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
Second.
Mr. Quinkle?
Yep.
Mr. Lennan?
Yes. Hi.
Item number nine is requesting the Board to award bid to Chagrin Valley Paving for the asphalt paving of the Engineers' Office South Yard, in the amount of 137,385 dollars as they represented the lowest and best bid. The engineer's estimate on that was 150, so it did commit 150.
Oh, good, yeah. Okay. Second. Go ahead.
Commissioner, the County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board to award the bid to Chagrin Valley Paving for the asphalt paving, Engineers South Yard, located at 12665 Merritt Road in Flaherty Township, in the amount of 137,385 dollars as they represented the lowest and best bid. The bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
Second.
Mr. Quinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Lennan?
Yes.
Item 10 is requesting the Board to reject all the bids for the construction of a steel storage building at the Engineers' Yard, as all bids received were in excess of the 10% of the estimate for the project.
So, our estimate for that was what?
Our estimate for that project was 160, and they came in quite over that.
Yeah. Now, do you feel that that's just because there's so much work out there right now, that people are just bidding, bidding high just to throw a number out there, or is there, was there something that was overlooked?
I think it's a mixture. One is, was the timeframe, our schedule, I think, was part of it, but also the amount of work, the time of year. We're in June, so trying to get that done and get it in, I think it could be a part of it.
How many, how many did we receive?
We had two bidders that received. We had a couple others that, we know that had full plans, but could not meet our schedule.
I see.
So, in order to meet that schedule, they, you know, probably made it a premium to try to get it done. So, there, there's a lot of factors in design, and so we'll go back to the drawing boards and relook at our specs and...
Will you change your estimate, or no?
Uh, we'll look at, you know, based on industry standards again, see what's going on, and probably have a couple conversations with these guys and say, you know, where did, how did it compare to ours?
I see. Okay.
I mean, it's, it was a simple structure.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty bare bones, so...
Yeah, there's not much to it.
I think a lot of it had to do with lead time.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Nick.
County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board reject all bids submitted for the construction of a steel storage building located at 12665 Merritt Road, as all bids submitted were in excess of 10% of the estimate for the project.
Second.
Mr. Quinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Lennan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Nick.
Thank you.
Number 11, we've got the Department of Developmental, Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board accept the resignation of Joni DeSec, the program administrator, to be effective July 3rd, 2018.
Oh, really? I didn't hear that.
Yeah, well, just, we just received it. Dave, maybe you want to speak to that?
Yes, good morning.
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 Joni had been contemplating this for quite some time.
Okay.
And she wasn't sure that she wanted to go about the same time that Anita was going, or she thought it might kind of put us into a situation that was uncomfortable for me. And I worked with her several occasions to get her comfortable that both Kelly and Jessica are in a good place.
Yep.
She's really mentored them, and it's time to hand it over, and she got to the point where she accepted that. She was really concerned about us.
Sure.
And she considered waiting until the end of the summer, but the time is right for her now, and, as you know, she went to part-time, you know, a couple of years ago, and that was authorized at 26 hours a week, but in reality, she was working 10 hours a week a week.
How many years did Joni work for the county now, do you know?
I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, 20.
Long time, yeah.
I mean, she, she was involved in the CHIP program, some programs that the Commissioners phased out, but there were, you know, these were active grants and loans and things that had to be followed and administered, you know, and properly carried out. That was kind of for 4K, and she was nice enough to be there to make sure that, you know, that was all handled properly.
Yeah, and in the latter months, she was really responsible for collecting on the loans, and now she's moved that over to Kelly and Jessica, so it's been a good...
Transition.
They planned this, she just wasn't sure when to do it.
Gotcha.
But we've all gotten comfortable with it, and so, you know, she handed it to me last week.
Okay.
I think what prompted it was we organized this open house today for Anita, and Anita talked her into having a double open house.
Ah, okay.
So, come over at 1:00 today if you can.
Good.
From 1:00 to 3:00, they're both going to be there.
Great, yeah, I will.
They don't think anybody's going to show up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure that's going to be the case. Yeah.
So, that's really the big brown star, again.
Okay. Yes, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll need a motion on 11.
Okay. So, second.
Mr. Quinkle?
No.
Shit.
I almost wanted to vote no on somebody retiring.
Yeah, what happens? Yeah. I guess so, yes.
What's that?
I'll let her know she can't wait to retire.
Sorry, if you vote no, you can't retire.
Okay. So, we have a public hearing at 9:30. Judge Grundel, you're, you were set for number, Agenda Item Number Six. How do we want to, do you want to...
Well, I think we had respect for the judge's time.
Do you want to come on up, and then we'll, we'll just push back our public hearing?
My apologies for being late. I thought it was 10:00. My fault.
No, no. I should have told you, yeah.
Good morning. You want to talk about the grant first?
We just did.
Get a great job covered.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
It's good, fine.
I want to make sure we got that done.
Doing a lot of good.
And in the future, we'll try to make sure we have somebody here, so that if you have questions, you will...
Well, it's just good to hear the positive things that the courts are doing, you know, with all these different programs. Like Ralph just said, you know, a lot of times we just hear a lot of the negative stuff, but this is good, positive things that the court's doing.
It reflects a, a direction that juvenile justice is heading in Ohio and nationally, and that is to be more, while holding young folks accountable, because you've got to hold them accountable when they do something wrong, but addressing the underlying needs, whether it's mental health or drug abuse, addiction, and frankly, it saves money, if I can just touch on this for a second.
So, we'll need a motion on 11.
Okay. Second.
Commissioner Quigley?
No.
I almost wanted to vote no on somebody who retired.
Yeah, what happens? I guess so, yes.
What's that?
I'll let her know she can't wait to retire.
Sorry, if you vote no, you can't retire.
So, we have a public hearing at 9:30. Judge Grundel, you're, you're set for number, Agenda Item Number 6. How do we want to, do you want to...
Well, I think we had respect for the judge's time.
Do you want to come on up, and then we'll, we'll just push back our public hearing?
My apologies for being late. I thought it was 10:00. My fault.
No, no. I should have told you.
Sorry. You want to talk about the grant first?
We just did.
Get a great job covered. Okay, really appreciate it.
Yeah, very good.
Want to make sure we got that done.
It's good five.
And in the future, we'll try to make sure we have somebody here so that if you have questions, you will...
Well, it's just good to hear the positive things that the courts are doing, you know, with all these different programs. Like Ralph just said, you know, a lot of times, we just hear a lot of the negative stuff, but this is good positive things that the court's doing.
It reflects a, a direction that juvenile justice is heading in Ohio and nationally, and that is to be more, while holding young folks accountable, because you've got to hold them accountable when they do something wrong, but addressing the underlying needs, whether it's mental health or drug abuse, addiction. And frankly, it saves money, if I can just touch on this for a second. If you're looking at our detention numbers, they have been evolving downward, partly because, knock on wood, Joga County has not had a major felony, delinquency level felony offense in about 18 months. We have a spat there of about nine cases. We had armed robberies, we had rapes, we had armed holdups, we had drug sales, and that really drove, those people need to be held super accountable, and you really have to deal with those at a higher level, but that really drove our detention numbers off the wall. We've been fortunate enough to have that. But the movement now, and you'll hear more about this with our resource center that we want to have, the Department of Ashland County, is to get intervention and services and assessments as early as possible, because that will cut down the cost long-term to the taxpayers at the back end. And we've been doing it the more traditional method of waiting till we got through adjudication, and we are realizing that the sooner you can get these young folks or their parents evaluated services, the shorter period of time, hopefully, they'll be in the court process. Ultimately, it will help them and save the taxpayers money. So, I appreciate the Commissioners taking the time to talk to our folks this morning.
Absolutely.
And again, that grant is, the two grants we have, that and the broker grant, have allowed us to cut our budget down for taxpayers' dollars quite a bit, and we appreciate the Commissioners supporting our work.
Yeah, that's a healthy, that's good.
I'm here just for humus, to try to give a primer. I, I'm not going to talk about the two pending cases, because that would be appropriate. I have to say, though, having read the accounts in Maple Leaf, that there have been misrepresentations about how the juvenile court process works that have misled you folks, and, and because they're being published as fact in local newspapers, have unfortunately misled the taxpayers and residents of Joga County. The juvenile court is not a criminal court. A juvenile court judge has authority to appoint an attorney other than the prosecutor to handle a case. And in fact, in other counties, they handle it differently than we do here. For example, in some counties, the JFS cases are not presented by the prosecutor. The JFS hires an outside lawyer to handle all the JFS cases. Some counties, they use the prosecutor. Some counties use a high breath of both, depending on the complexity of the case. In our county, JFS uses the prosecutor. That's their choice, as far as I'm concerned, not mine. But when it comes to delinquency and unruly cases, there's this disconnect. It's been represented that these are criminal cases, and they are not. We are a civil court in delinquencies. You do not get a criminal record as a juvenile. You get a juvenile record, which is subject to sealing under much better terms than a criminal record for an adult. You are not indicted in the juvenile court. There is a complaint that is filed, and what I've given to you today is the rules that I have to operate on. Juvenile Rule 10A, I didn't write it, by the way, these rules are done by the Ohio Supreme Court, says that any person having knowledge of a child who appears to be a juvenile traffic offender, delinquent, unruly, neglected, dependent, or abused may file a complaint in the juvenile court in the county in which the child has residence or in which the offense occurred. You could be in the grocery store, Mr. Spiller, if I can take your store for a minute. You could be in your store, and you could see a kid, take something, shoplift, pull it in his pocket, and walk out your store. You under Rule 10 can file a complaint. And in fact, in some counties, the loss prevention officers of Walmarts and related stores file their complaints directly with the juvenile court. They don't go through a prosecutor's office. They follow Rule 10, and they file a complaint. You could see a kid, you know, parents having trouble with a kid, and they've tried, and they've tried, and the kid is just not listening to them, and then, you know, putting up with their authority and following their authority under Rule 10, the parents can file a complaint directly with us. And in fact, you can go to our website, or the website of just about every juvenile court in the state of Ohio, and see the fill-in-the-blank complaint form to file a delinquency or unruly complaint in the juvenile court. And in Portage County, the school districts file all the truancy complaints directly. They don't go through the prosecutor, same in Delaware County. In Portage County and Delaware County, low-end juvenile misconduct is filed directly by police officers with the juvenile court. They don't go through the prosecutor. They only go through the prosecutor's office when there is a, what's considered felony-level delinquency conduct. Then they go to the prosecutor, and usually there because they need further investigation to present the case before the court. So, number one, anybody can file. Number two, when you file a delinquency complaint, at my initial hearing, there is no prosecutor. There is no lawyer for the complainant at all. At the initial hearing, there is the intake officer from the juvenile court, the child, child's parents. If the parents want a lawyer or bring a lawyer, we set it for a pre-trial. If they don't want a lawyer, if the child wants to plead true, and in juvenile court, you plead true and not true, because we're not a criminal court, so you don't plead guilty or not guilty. You plead true and not true. If the child pleads true at the initial hearing, under Juvenile Rule 29D, I can accept the plea of true after I go through a certain process to make sure that the kid's not being forced to plead true. And I can go straight to what we refer to in juvenile court as disposition. There's no sentencing in our court. It's called disposition. It's the penalty phase of the juvenile proceeding. And if the kid pleads true, that's it. There's no lawyer on behalf of the complaint. There's no lawyer there on behalf of the juvenile, or if there is, and he's pleading true, they plead true, I accept the plea of true, I give them their disposition, their penalty, case closed. Now, that's 70% of the cases in juvenile court in Joga County. That we never see a lawyer for the complaint, hardly ever see a lawyer at that, those cases for the, for the juvenile. But if the juvenile wants to plead not true and have their right to have a trial, which we refer to as adjudicatory hearings, we don't really have trials, we have adjudicatory hearings, then, under Rule 29E1, it specifically reads, "If a party denies the allegations, the court shall direct the prosecuting attorney or another attorney at law to assist the court by presenting evidence in support of the allegations of a complaint." That's Rule 291. I didn't write it, Supreme Court wrote it, and that's the rule. Then, Ohio Revised Code, Section 215140 says, "On the request of the judge, when the child is represented by an attorney or when a trial is requested, the prosecuting attorney shall assist the court in presenting the evidence." So, in juvenile proceedings, it is the court that controls the proceedings, because again, we're, if you read Juvenile Rule 1, we are supposed to be rehabilitative as well as protective of the community. I have the power under Juvenile Rule 9 not to accept the complaint. Under Juvenile Rule 9, if I believe the child should be served better by not going through a complaint system but by going through diversion, or by going through some sort of services, I can refuse to accept the complaint. Judge Burt, Judge Paskey can't refuse to accept a criminal complaint. Judge DePica can't refuse to accept a criminal complaint. They can dismiss it later, but they can't refuse it. Under Juvenile Rule 9, I can just flat-out say no, we're not going to accept the filing of the complaint. And by the way, in juvenile court, I am also the clerk of the juvenile court. This does not go through the least of means to me. By law, the juvenile court judge is the clerk of his own court. And in probate court, I am the clerk of that court as well. So, I control both the administrative clerk's function as well as the judicatory function in the courtroom. So, it's not the prosecutor who decides whether there's probable cause and whether a complaint is filed, it's the juvenile court judge. I don't have to accept the complaint. Anybody can file a complaint. I don't have to accept a complaint from anybody, and I can divert the case from ever coming before the court through the diversion program. But if the person wants to defend and they want a lawyer, I have an option. Under Rule 29E1, I can tell prosecutor, "I'd like you to present the evidence to assist me." It's not prosecuting, it's to present the evidence to assist the court, and that's the language both on the statute and the rule. Or I can appoint another attorney at law. And the reason for that is because, as the Supreme Court ruled in Coke versus Campbell and Henry Anderson, as the Supreme Court has long held, that juvenile court proceedings are civil rather than criminal in nature. We are a unique high breath. We're supposed to be protecting children and the community while rehabilitating children, and that's why we are a different animal. Just imagine if you were the parents of a child who've been giving you a hard time, and you're frustrated that you can't get that child under wraps. Child's running away, child's not listening to you, bless you. And instead, you decide, well, I've run all of options. Maybe you had the child to a counselor, and the counselor said, "You know, the only way you're going to get this kid's attention is to go to the juvenile court and file a complaint." We've had those cases. Parents come in, file a complaint, we bring the kid in, if we deem it appropriate, we accept the complaint, we have a hearing, usually to try to get the kid's attention and to put some parameters and limits on the kid, perhaps put them on probation so as to get their attention. In an unruly case, I cannot put a kid in detention. My maximum punishment on unruly is community service and probation. Now, if they violate the rules of probation while unruly, then they could be facing a delinquency charge. So, the parents file us, they come in front of us. Just imagine how the parents would feel if the prosecutor's office could step in and say, "We're taking over, and we're going to make this case the federal case of the year, and we're going to really want to do something to this kid." How many parents in their mind are going to bring their kids to the juvenile court if they're going to turn a disciplinary unruly problem into a criminal proceeding that they don't have control of? And that's why our system is set up the way it is. Now, it's been misrepresented that I did something improper. I followed Rule 29E1. You can read it yourself, in 215140. If following the juvenile rules set forth by the Supreme Court is somehow improper, somebody needs to explain that to me. If following the statute passed by the legislature, and I don't think I had a vote on this one during my time there, although I'm not sure of that, that somebody needs to explain that to me. But we follow the rules that are written. Now, the last thing is it was misrepresented that this has never happened before in the state of Ohio, and I went back and lost the lodger hearing from February to make sure I got that, that correct. And that's absolutely not true. First of all, I cited to you in this handout, Henry Kimble from the 7th District, Harrison County, from 2002, where the court there appointed another attorney at law to assist the court by presenting evidence in a juvenile court case. It was appealed to the Court of Appeals, and the 7th District Court of Appeals citing Juvenile Rule 29E1 said it was totally improper. That particular case happened to be an abuse, neglect, and dependency case where the Children's Services Agency bailed out of the case, and one of the parents asked the court to appoint a lawyer to continue with the case, and the court did, and then the other parent and their Children's Services complained, and the Court of Appeals said, "No, 29E1 says what 29E1 says. The court shall direct either the prosecutor or another attorney to present, to assist the court for presenting the evidence." But more close to home, last November, December, I invoked Rule 29E1 in an unruly case. The case was filed by the West Joga School District. In that case, the young person had had some unruly issues. The West Joga School District decided they were going to proceed with a complaint. They filed the complaint in part because the young person walked into a, a event in the West Joga School, a rally, and went like this, mocking, shooting a machine gun at the students in the audience. West Joga felt that that needed some sort of attention. They brought the case as an unruly. The complaint was filed by the principal of the high school, West Joga High School. The case came to us, the child juvenile asked for a defense lawyer. We appointed a defense lawyer, and based on 215140 and 29E1, I asked the prosecutor's office to assist the court to present the evidence on behalf of the school district in the case. I happened to see the prosecutor two days before the hearing, and having a feeling that something wasn't right, I asked, "Are, are you prepared to go forward?" This was the assistant prosecutor. "Are you prepared to go forward?" I would say, "Yes." I actually said, "Are you prepared for Friday?", and she said, "Yes." Come Friday, we come into the hearing, prosecutor, school district, juvenile, juvenile's lawyer, juvenile's parents. I start the hearing, the defense lawyer says, "Judge, I'm moved to dismiss this case." I said, "I'm sorry, why would we do that?" And he said, "Because the prosecutor's not going to go forward here today." I said, "Excuse me?" And I looked to my left, and the assistant prosecutor said, "That's right, Judge. We didn't write this complaint. We're not going forward on this complaint." I said, "Thank you very much. You're dismissed pursuant to Rule 29E1." And I brought in another attorney under 29E1 to finish assisting the court on the complaint. Ultimately, that attorney did the job well. The child ultimately pled true to the unruly, received very necessary services, and is still getting those services as we speak, and the case was concluded in December of last year without objection from the Joga County Prosecutor's Office. Come January, I invoked Rule 29E1 in two other cases, thinking that there was no issue, because there was no issue in the prior case. I left town, and you folks know the rest, and I won't get into those details. But 29E1 exists, it's been invoked in this county, it's been found to be proper in Harrison County 16 years ago by the Court of Appeals in the 7th District, and is a tool in the box for juvenile courts to use. Having said all that, I don't usually use Rule 29E1. I recognize it's cheaper to use the prosecutor's office. I would prefer, in most cases, that the prosecutor's office handled the case, because they're already being able to do that. However, I found out later that the prosecutor's office in that case involving West G had said to West G, "Not to file a complaint." And here's where the rubber meets the road. The school districts have a right to file complaints under Juvenile Rule 10. You have a right to file a complaint under Juvenile Rule 10. All 90,000 residents of Joga County, give or take, that are over age 18, have a right to file a complaint in juvenile court. The gatekeeper is not the prosecutor. I'm not saying this to, it's, well, as a break of notions, I am the gatekeeper because of Juvenile Rules 1, 9, 10, 29, and 215140, the Revised Code. If I am wrong on this, if you submit this question to your lawyer, Mr. Hunt, and he tells me I am wrong on this, that somehow I have misread these rules, I will be glad to address the issue in a different manner. But how can I not read plain rules in plain English, follow the plain rules last December without any problem, and then be expected to ignore the rules going forward thereafter? I think we would be the only county in the state of Ohio that would have a prosecutorially-driven juvenile court. If you go to Portage County, see what they do. Go to Delaware County, go to their website, and see what they do, that the prosecutor comes to the assistance of the court when requested pursuant to Rules 29E1 and 215140, because we're not criminal courts. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. I'd be glad to try to resolve this in a way that does not cost taxpayers money. I cannot, though, allow Joga County to somehow be governed by a different set of rules than the other 87 counties of the state of Ohio when it comes to how the juvenile justice system operates, and I will allow that to happen. It's not fair to our residents and to our children. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
One question for you. So, as a juvenile court judge, I mean, you both probated juvenile court, and I've heard you and the couple, I'll put this correctly, the, the court is the one that has the right, you individually, personally...
It's not me.
No, it's, right, it's the court. That's right. And so, I mean, taking you out of the equation, the court still has that responsibility. But you have, you sit on a number of organizational, organizations in which you guys all compare notes, the juvenile courts across the board. So, this is not something you're doing out of school on your own accord. This is something that's kind of best practice within the juvenile court. Is that true?
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Quigley. I, I am the president of the Ohio Juvenile Judges Association this year, and we have talked about this issue. I mean, this is not me, and I didn't make it personal. I, look, I was shocked. I was on vacation when you guys had that February hearing, and, and I'm sorry I couldn't be here to answer questions since you had that question, but I had no reason to believe there was an issue after I had invoked Rule 29E1 last November, December, without any issue. But, but this is an issue that transcends me, it transcends Joga County. These are the rules set forth by the Ohio Supreme Court. If somebody has a problem with these rules, look, if they want to have a rule that says you shall direct the prosecutor, then that's their purview, and I'll follow the rule. But I am following the rule as it's written today, and it says, "It's my option to direct the prosecuting attorney or another attorney at law to assist the court." Do I want to make a practice of that? No, because it costs more money. I get it. But I can't talk about the other two cases, but I had good reason for what I did. I just can't explain to you now, because those cases are up in the Court of Appeals, but I'd love to explain it to you at some point.
I got a question. How, how much on average do these cases cost, a juvenile case like this, you know, the unruly, for example, to bring in an outside attorney to represent?
That particular case, somewhere between $1,000 and $2,000.
Okay. And how, how often do these cases happen? I mean, you said 70%.
First time in seven years.
The first time?
December of last year was the first time in seven years that I had a prosecutor refuse to prosecute the case in my courtroom.
Okay.
First time in seven years. So, it's not like, you know, and look, I didn't trigger that. I didn't ask the prosecutor to take the case only to walk in and say, "We're not going to pursue the case." And at the time I asked the prosecutor to come into the case, it would have been nice to know, before we had the hearing, and the defense lawyer jumps up and says, "We're dismissing the case," that, that there was an issue, but we are where we are, and the problem is, in that particular case, the young man, we don't do unruly cases that we want to punish young kids. The unruly process is meant to be a rehabilitative process. Most of our unruly kids have some sort of emotional, mental health, or behavioral issue, Most of our unruly kids have some sort of emotional, mental health, or behavioral issue. And as you will find out if you sit in my courtroom for a while, because I came, when I first came to the court, it was, you know, every hardcore belt and suspenders, and then you realize a lot of these young folks have issues in their past, in their upbringing, that have caused them to have these issues, whether they're emotional, mental health, or behavioral. And if we don't address those issues, putting them in detention is irrelevant. Giving them community services is irrelevant. Putting them on probation is irrelevant. We must get them the counseling, the mental health input, the change of scenery from a dysfunctional family if we hope to turn them so that they're not going to be up the street in immunity court at the age of 18 and across the street at 25. But we don't do unruly just because we feel like punishing kids. I mean, we're doing it because we're trying to help change behavior and get services. That's sort of why we're the grant today. We thank you for that. This is all geared in that direction now. We are far less oriented to, oh, boy, we got to punish these people. And to, what do we have to do to help get them help so that they don't have a lifetime of dysfunction that will, A, keep coming through the criminal justice system when they're older, and B, cost taxpayers for 55 years because their behavior's not changing? So, but again, I'm not looking for a battle. I prefer that this thing just got resolved. I'm more than willing to talk to the prosecutor about trying to resolve this and have them as the first answer. But if they say, if you file a complaint today, Commissioner, and they say, "We're not going to pursue it," you still have a right under Rule 10 to pursue it. And I have a duty to give you somebody there to assist in the presentation of that complaint under Rule 29. That's, I mean, we're not a criminal court. This whole configuration that we're some sort of criminal court goes against the Ohio Supreme Court ruling since 1964. And we're just not a criminal court.
And I think, you know, and we've spoke, you know, multiple times on this matter, and I think the idea is, you know, we want to try and avoid going down this road of creating, you know, more and more legal, you know, billings and such, and, you know, this is a, it's a rare occasion that these type of things come up, but obviously, I can see from your side of the table, you don't want to, you know, you have to draw a line in the sand. But, you know, if there's some way we can come to an agreement or an understanding with the prosecutor's office, the two of you, that when these matters do arise, that we try and communicate, and if they want to pass on that case, and they're okay with you bringing in outside legal representation for the minor, that's fine. You know, but I don't know, you know, I just don't want to see this to go down a road where we go into a year's worth of waiting for Supreme Court or Appeals Court, and then we've got $100,000 legal bill or something.
I appreciate that, just to set the record straight. I have not filed anything yet about anybody. And I stress the word "yet" because I'm not going to sit still and allow, I'm not a party to the 11th District Court of Appeals case. And in fact, so you know, there was no party other than the prosecutor in the 11th District Court of Appeals case initially, but CASA, Guardian, Alitham has now filed to try to get disinformation before the Court of Appeals. And I understand, and again, not addressing the case specifically, but you can check the docket, I believe the prosecutor has filed a motion to have the CASA not allowed to participate in the Court of Appeals case, which means, again, there would be nobody there contra to the prosecutor's position. I had this once before.
This is a, this is a case that's coming down the line, you're saying?
There's two cases pending in the Court of Appeals right now. The two cases, I won't get into the details, are pending in the Court of Appeals. I'm not a party. Originally, there was no other party. It was just the Jogger County Prosecutor. This is the one you guys authorized the payment for. There was no counterparty because the juveniles weren't going to pay lawyers to defend this because they perceive it as a personal issue between me and the prosecutor. I'm not a party to it, so I can't defend it. The CASA decided to defend it because in both cases, there are some issues involving, there's an Ohio Supreme Court case that says a juvenile court that acts after an appeal has been filed, all the actions of the juvenile court are voided. And so these kids are out there now adjudicated, and they may or may not be coming around the corner again. I don't know. Without addressing a specific case, I don't know. But I haven't spent any money yet, but I'm not going to sit here and allow Jogger County's juvenile court to be treated differently than others. In the one thing that was filed that my court has been forced to spend money on, that in the early goings, an affidavit of bias was filed against me in both cases by the prosecutor. And we have to defend, and you gentlemen are nice enough to authorize the defense of that. Within days of our filing, it was summarily denied by, the affidavits filed against me were summarily denied by Chief Justice O'Connor on the Ohio Supreme Court. So whatever that money that was spent on both sides has been spent for denial of an affidavit of bias and prejudice. I have not spent anything currently, because I'm not a party in the Court of Appeals, but as I said, I'm not going to sit here and not represent to you that this, we're not procured to go forward to defend our rights because this is plain English. And we have a right to make sure these rules are the rules that govern our court. So if it's not resolved, I fear there could be additional issues or proceedings down the line. I'd like to point those.
How do we resolve it?
Well, I think we resolve it by coming to an understanding of what is the authority, recognizing the rules in place. I'd be more than willing to give the prosecutor first dibs, but if they decide, like they did in that case in December, they don't want to go forward, then I still have the right under juvenile Rule 29 E1, and the complaint has the right to have somebody present the evidence, assist the court, present the evidence.
So could you come up with, say, a letter of understanding?
Right, but the Court of Appeals cases need to be resolved, and frankly, I'm, well, not a party, this all becomes moot if there are decisions made that preclude a settlement from being effective.
So let me ask you a question, if it's improper or inappropriate, look, tell me. How does the prosecutor view these rules? I mean, I'm, this seems pretty clear to me, so I understand that.
I can tell you what was filed in the affidavit of bias and prejudice now. The affidavit was rejected by Chief Justice O'Connor. The position in that affidavit of bias and prejudice, and I can speak about that because that's a public record, and I will not address the specific two cases, but I can address the public record aspect of it. I'd be glad to provide you all a copy of the filings in that affidavit of bias prejudice, including the Chief Justice's ruling denying it. The prosecutor is asserting this position that under revised code Section 309, which governs criminal proceedings, that the juvenile courts are criminal proceedings, and that therefore, he has the right to decide what complaints are filed, whether there's probable cause to file a complaint or not, that complaints from school districts and others should go through the prosecutor's office, and that if he says there's no probable cause, then you can't pursue the complaint. The problems with that is, number one, we are not a criminal court. The US House will quickly clear on that. We are not governed by 309, those govern criminal cases, with one caveat, we do have certain criminal proceedings in juvenile court. If you are bound over, in the state TJ Lane, for example, that is a quasi-criminal proceeding. The bind over to make you get tried as an adult has criminal connotations, and I will be the first to tell you, the prosecutor has the absolute right to pursue those. And even though Rule 29 E1 says what it says, I don't believe I have the authority to tell anybody else but the prosecutor to prosecute by those. I believe that's his exclusive authority. SYOs, serious youthful offenders, there's a hybrid. You could try a juvenile as an SYO, which means serious youthful offender, and what happens there is, the juvenile court can actually try the child as an adult and give them a bifurcated, and this can be a jury trial, or a few jury trials in juvenile court. Take a 16-year-old kid, does something with a gun or selling drugs, and the prosecutor wants to try him as an SYO, a serious youthful offender. It's actually tried in the juvenile court by the juvenile court judge using the adult rules, including jury. And then the juvenile court puts on two penalties, gives them the juvenile penalty, let us say, send them to Department of Youth Services, W8 to 21, one year to 21, but also gives them an adult penalty, eight years in state prison. And as long as they fulfill the youth penalty, they never spend a day under the adult penalty. But if they blow out during the youth penalty phase, let's say they run away from the Department of Youth Services facility, then they have to serve their adult penalty. Those two proceedings are criminal, and in both those proceedings, I will conclude that the prosecutor needs to bring them.
So if I hear you correctly, and again, I apologize for this question, that maybe you just ignorance of my perder stupidity of my per. So if you've got an unruly child, and the prosecutor is right, and he can make this a criminal event, then he's got to go to a grand jury, no?
No, no. Here, an unruly is always a juvenile case. The problem is, let's, a lot of times on unruly cases, we've kind of, for want of a better phrase for saying this, we kind of come to a, like, some sort of agreement, like, well, the kid's not listening to mom and dad. We put them on a work group, we put them on probation, and the kid, if he does six months without getting in trouble, we just close the case. The concern is, and the parents brought the kid in plain, so, you know, they're in agreement. The concern is, and then there's no appeal to an unruly case, by the way, which is, there is no appeal to an unruly case. Yet we seem to have a case on appeal, that's a rule. But the problem is that if the prosecutor thinks that they're going to try it like a criminal case, then we're treating unruly cases, which, by the way, there are no such things as unruly cases for adults. Unruly by definition is conduct by a youth that would not be criminal if you were 19 years old. You don't listen to your parents at 19 years, there ain't no case for that, okay? You know, you decide to run away from home at 19, there ain't no law against that. But at 17, there's a law against that. It's called the unruly statute. And so we don't want to elevate those things. They're down here for helping kids. Delinquency is here. SYO and bind over is here for the serious stuff. We don't want to start sliding that way, and we want to keep at that, you know, at that distinction. We are not a criminal court. We're just not prosecutorial. You never, except for a serious youthful offenders and bind over, you're never prosecuted in juvenile court. As a youth, you are adjudicated under the civil law and the civil law and the juvenile rules. But we're just trying to follow that, guys. I didn't invent this. I didn't wake up one day and decide that I wanted to cause a problem. I invoked the system in December, it worked. I invoked it for reasons that I someday will hope to explain to you in January, and it actually worked. And now we're spending all this tax money debating over this. I'm trying to figure out what the debate is, that's why I go back. If Mr. Hunt wants to tell me how I'm misreading this, I'll be the first person to apologize. But I don't see how I'm misreading this. It's just plain, simple stuff. And I don't think we're a criminal court, and I don't think we are under the auspices of the prosecutor. You can't go over across the street and file a complaint for criminal conduct in Judge Burke Court and Judge Cassick Court. You got to go through the prosecutor's office because it's a criminal. You don't have to do it here. Take a time and look at the website, for Delaware County's juvenile court, Portage County's juvenile court. Heck, there are some places, and Mr. Spill, you don't appreciate this, we're law enforcement passed, there's software that some police departments have, that when they're on the street with little Johnny here who just got caught shoplifting at the Walmart, they type up some information on their little computer in the squad car, and it automatically generates a complaint at the juvenile court for that conduct. There's software that does that. It's not sent to a prosecutor's office. I would submit 90% of the complaints, 80% of the complaints statewide, I'll go through.
What's the rule of thumb in Jogger County? How has it always been?
Well, that's a good question, because back under Judge Henry, there was a time when all the juvenile complaints were prepared by the court. And so the court prepared, the police reports would come from the court, reports would come from the court, and the court staff would prepare the complaints. And then the police officer would come in and sign the complaint, or the school would come in and sign the complaint, and it was prepared by the court. If you go to Mahoning County today, I believe that's still the procedure being used in Mahoning County, that they don't go through the prosecutor's office, they go straight to the juvenile court. Judge Henry correctly, during some point in his career, thought, geez, there might be a conflict of the court that adjudicates the complaints drafting the complaints, and he correctly stopped that process. And so then the process became the green sheets, which is the law enforcement sheet about the event, and the police report would go to the prosecutor's office and to our office, to our intake officer.
So you both get a copy now?
And then the complaints are generated to the prosecutor's office, most of the time. We've had complaints generated by parents, we've had complaints generated by school districts. All the complaints are signed by the police department. But in Jogger County, I think the actual preparation comes with the prosecutor, and then they come and sign it. And they usually come and sign it either in the prosecutor's office or in the court. And I'm not looking to change the rules. I'm willing to follow the rules. I'd like to give the prosecutor the first option.
It sounds like, you know, 88 different counties, there potentially is 88 different ways these things are generated, but, you know, what's unique to Jogger, and what's going to work with our prosecutor and our juvenile court, you know, that's something the two of you can, yeah, right?
Absolutely. There's no reason to have to. If we can resolve the current stuff that's out there that needs to get resolved so we can move forward, then there's no reason we can't.
That's what I would really like to see is us trying to...
But as long as there's an option that the Court of Appeals can do something that would create a potential misstatement of the law for our county and our four sister counties in the 11th District, that's a problem.
Well, if we can agree to try and work towards some type of, we call it a settlement or a plan forward, I would, you know, advise, let's try that, give that a college try before we, you know, go any further. I know there's one other party that's not here today to participate in this conversation, but, you know, if we could, you know...
Well, you know, again, as long as we don't have the option that that law's going to be made again in this county. But my point, ultimately, being a juvenile court judge, not just me, all of you in the state of Ohio, has the authority to appoint a lawyer other than the prosecutor to assist the court in presenting the evidence on the juvenile complaint.
Understood, yeah.
And I would hope that that's what the people of Jogger County are reporting, that that's what the rule's in. I'd provide a media copy of this if they care to make sure the public knows what the facts are. But I appreciate the time here.
I appreciate your...
Unless I say, we will have somebody here, we have something under agenda, I will make sure we have someone here.
That would be great. Thank you. No, it's, I think it's a, it's a good thing. It's a positive to, you know, talk about the, all the programs that you guys do and the good work, and, you know, and then the employees that you have there. I mean, it's, it's different, you know, if Skip calls with a question or I call with a question, but it's nice as a board to have that conversation and supportive...
Sitting over here, can I raise two other quick issues?
Sure.
Number one, I read today's paper, you're closing the home. I certainly believe that's your authority to do so. I do want you to know, we have three boards from Probate Court over there, and so we are going to have our folks hopefully, whoever, to make sure those folks...
Jessica, have that talk to Jessica, because they're working around the clock to make sure they get good outcome for everybody there.
I certainly appreciate your decision on that, certainly no question. But I want to make sure the street people weigh in somewhere, because I'm responsible for those three. And second, you know, we're working, I definitely want to take a minute to talk about this detention situation. I don't know if you know what Judge Camp Police did in Ashville County? Judge Camp Police is the probate juvenile court judge in Ashville County. About four months ago, he closed the juvenile detention facility, just shut it off. And he has started a resource center process that we're going to pattern, a different slate version. But the problem is, he's now trying to place people someplace. He's got a contract with Mahoning County in Trumbull. He's been talking with the Portage Jogger Detention Center, but frankly, he wants to put people in. Half of it's costing us to put people in, and I'm having a bunch of issues with that. Plus, I'm not sure we want to get the worst of the worst from National Bureau of County dropped on our list.
Yeah, we're not going to subsidize it for Astoria.
Yeah, that's not right, but he did wake me up to something, and something I like to work with the commissioners on long term. It's costing us, I calculate, 3, 350, 3, I'm trying to figure out, our numbers are coming down cost-wise at the detention center, in part because we have had mass Russian felonies, in part because we're trying to do some alternative type of service placements. And I do thank you for letting us send, we've sent four kids to George Junior Republic. If you haven't gotten there yet, I really would ask you to take the time to drive to Grove City. It's unfortunate, it's over a Pennsylvania line, but that facility has had some great results for some of our kids, and it's cheaper than a detention center for my vision.
And the services.
Amazing, the services that we keep on hand. But I'd like to sit down and keep revising the issue, because I do believe there may be some ways of lower costs here or something. I don't know if it's using more of the George Juniors of the world, because if I'm going to send a kid someplace for 350 bucks, I'd like him to get the services to get a George Junior versus not getting those services for that price. But I'd like the city commissioners to see what our choices and alternatives are.
I mean, I don't know, you know, the idea was brought up as an equity partner in this, Astoria being a third, you know, if they're going to be a true partner in it, not just use us for a cheap rate, right?
Right. Judge Camp Police came to talk to the Portage Jogger County Detention Board meeting, and that was my talk to him. If you're telling me that Astoria County is going to take their share of the total cost, and we do it on bed nights, as you remember, I mean, like now, let's say, if Portage County has 60% of bed nights and we have 40, they pay 60% of the overall cost, we pay 40.
That's right, yeah.
Our bed nights are down to like 18 or 15 or something, so, you know, we're getting that less and less. But if they want to come in and pay, like, if they're doing 20% of the bed nights, they pay 20% of the cost, I don't have a real heartbreak with that. We can work with the issues of who they're sending. But they don't want that. They want to rent a bed, and the problem with renting a bed is, A, you might be getting their worst, and what do we do with that? But B, why would we be subsidizing Astoria County's taxpayers for the cost of their detention at the expense of our taxpayer? That doesn't make rational sense to me. And I don't think they've, I don't think they're going to do, take their share apart. So I don't think we're going to do a contract with Astoria County. I certainly won't throw up one of those sort of...
Well, it seems like things are going more towards, you know, what we're discussing today, the monitoring type situation and more of a, you know, outpatient type approach, I guess, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, look, we need to detain these kids who need to be detained. But we need to get help for kids who, you know, we still have the weekend program. Our most effective program, I started my first year here, it's called the Weekend Program. You get 90 days in detention, it's 45 weekends, two nights every weekend. But if you, on Friday, the probation officer comes to me and says, "This person's done good in the community, good in school, good at home, I waive that weekend."
good in the community, good in school, good at home, I waive that weekend. Or if they come to me and say they've been bad in the community, bad at school, bad at home, then you go in for that weekend. You'd be surprised, after one or two weekends, how few of these kids lose their weekends, finally get the message.
Well, we should talk further.
That's still our best program.
You know, and, you know, the, you know, the conversation has been, you know, with John Family Services, with the potential of maybe doing something with the facility there. The youth center that we currently have here in Jogga County, I know, you know.
That's a problem for us.
You're right, there's not, you're not utilizing that, or it's not being utilized by your court, right?
Yeah, it's the last thing to ask help from the commissioners on. That youth center bears Frank Laverne's name. Frank Laverne was the juvenile judge for like thirty years. Judge Laverne worked hard with your predecessors to get a youth center that was under the control of the court, so he had a place to put kids, short of detention, but that needed some assistance and guidance. Back in two thousand five, for reasons that still aren't clear to me, the juvenile court gave up the youth center. You owned the building, but they decided they didn't want to run it anymore, and then the deal was to contract with Ravenwood, and to give Lake County certain bed rights over there. It has created certain issues. Number one, I can't put a child in the youth center. In my own Frank Laverne Jogga County Youth Center, I can't get a child, because usually there's problems with Ravenwood. Ravenwood puts private people in there, they, they're not a, they're not a business, right? They're not going to leave empty beds if they have to. So when I have a need, something off of the beds fill. Second, there's Lake County kids in there. Third, I go there and play basketball with the kids three or four times a year, eat dinner with them, talk with them, see how things are going, and I've been told I can't put a youth in the youth center, because he may have some aggressiveness or violence problem, getting, you know, hitting his brother or somebody. So I'm sitting there eating dinner one night with a young man from Lake County, who's in the youth center, but his underlying delinquency was for felonious assault, he had a black belt in karate, and he almost beat a kid to that. But he's sitting in our youth center, and I can't get a kid in there because of aggressive personality. So at some point, this youth center issue is going to come and bite us, because I'm still forced to put kids over nights and weekends in the detention center, who really ought to be placed somewhere less secure than the detention center.
And we're spending four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year out of our general fund to subsidize.
Right. And so, again, these are some things to look at.
We could do some, yeah.
We'd like to work with you. The point is, going for, we want to work with the commissioners, and, you know, ask us if you're doing something wrong, or you need input, let us know, we'll be glad to come in here. I don't think we do anything wrong here, but we'd like to work with you on these other things, that we think there's better, there's better directions to go than what we're spending some of this money on now, and that's like, we'll see, we're trying to find those directions.
Yeah.
So I thank you very much.
Yeah, definitely, appreciate your time. Definitely, very good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, take care.[1665.33]